And what I would like to do is, for the public present and also for those who are watching at home, introduce everyone up here. To my left, your right is Mr. Lambert, and then to his right is Vice Chairman David Eisenbacher. I'm Glenn Clark, the chairman. Over here is Mr. Desmond, and to his right is Mr. McCown. And then on the side over here is Paul Evans, who represents the city administration here for the city of Troy, and he'll be advising us here tonight. And then to his right is Ms. Dufresne, who is an assistant city attorney with the city of Troy, and tonight she will be advising us as our legal advisor. At this time, I'd like to call on Mr. Evans to call the roll.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Here.
Mr. Desmond?
Here.
Mr. Kelsounas?
We do have quorum, and we will address to the petitioner, hit item four, that the petitioner has the right to request postponement of his action to a, to the next meeting where hopefully a full board will be present. That is a opportunity for the petitioner to consider. At this time, I'd like to call on Vice Chairman Eisenbacher to read for the public our rules and procedures.
Zoning Board of Appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors appointed by city council to decide on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty with the land that would warrant the granting of a variant, of the variance. The board will hear the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present. Then the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will be given an opportunity to address the board to explain the justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request should raise their hand, and when recognized by the chairman, come up to the podium. The speaker should identify themselves with name and address, indicate their relationship to the property in question, for example, next door neighbor, live behind the property, et cetera, and state whether they are in favor of or against the variance request, and give reasons for their opinion. Comments must be directed through the chairman. Comments will be, should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration. Only one person will be recognized by the chairman to speak at one time. At the conclusion of public comments, the chairman will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, no other public comment will be taken unless in response to a specific question by a member of the board. The board will then make a motion to approve, deny, or postpone the request. In order for the request to pass, a minimum of four votes are needed. If the request is not granted, the applicant has the right to appeal the board's decision to Oakland County Circuit Court.
Thank you. Move on to item number two, which is approval of the minutes. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns, or a motion to be made by a member of the board? Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Chairman, I would move the approval of the minutes.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Lambert, seconded by Mr. McCown, for approval of the minutes. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I believe we're prepared to, for a vote, Mr. Evans?
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. McCown?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now we move on to the item number three, which is approval of the agenda. Essentially, if there's any concerns by a member of the board, they can be seated here, we could perhaps move items around. So is, are there any objections to what has been printed for your review? If not, then that is our set agenda for the evening. Now we move on to item number four, and I will call on Mr. Evans to present to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to direct everybody's attention to the monitors. As printed in the agenda, this is a variance request, requested by James Hall for Fund Space Direct LLC for property at 1204 Rothwell, in order to construct a pergola at the rear of the house, a 15-foot variance from the required 45-foot rear yard setback. What I have displayed on the, is an aerial of the neighborhood. This property is located south of Waddles and west of Cooks. I've delineated the property in red. It's on the north side of Rothwell. The subject property and all surrounding property is used and zoned for single-family residential. The applicants provided a survey showing the addition in red to the back of the house. Rothwell Drive is at the bottom of this survey, and that's where the proposed pergola is going to go. The applicant has provided some mockups. This is a side view showing the limits of the 12-foot by 16-foot proposed pergola. This is the rear view. They've also provided some architectural plans showing what it'll look like from the side, and that's a top view as well. Now, homes or additions to homes in this neighborhood need to be set back at least 45 feet from the back property line, and with the proposed addition of the pergola, the resulting setback will only be 30 feet. So in order to proceed with this project, the applicant's requesting a 15-foot setback variance from this board. I'll turn it back over to the board for any questions.
Mr. Evans, are there any questions for the city administration? Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Evans, what, probably a two-part question. Number one, the definition of a pergola, and number two, is the fact that it's a permanent covering rather than just like a awning? You mean we have to deal with it as far as the variance is concerned?
All right, I'll answer number two first. That's correct. It does have a covering. As you may be aware, our code does allow uncovered decks with rails up to 48 inches tall to be installed to the rear of houses and encroach into the rear setback. In this case, because we have a few poles, but also a roof structure, as indicated in one of the exhibits, it's viewed more as an addition. So that's going to require the setback variance. I don't have a definition for pergola in the zoning ordinance, but that's what it's commonly called, and perhaps the applicant can enumerate on that further for you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for Mr. Evans?
Yeah. If, if it was not affixed to the property, there would be no question here at all, right? If you're just, this is one of the ones from Costco, you set it in the backyard, it was not actually affixed under the property, he wouldn't be here, right? Am I correct?
I would say that is likely correct.
Okay.
We see the ones that are temporary in nature, just that. They're up for short periods of time, seasonal at best. This is a more permanent structure, and there's substantial investment here.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Evans, so, and I know, I'm sure the petitioner can address this as well. So is the issue really here, the, the poles? I want to say the polling, but it's probably not correct. The, the poles, or the fabric structure, or both?
I would say it's the, the roof.
So it is a hard roof, then?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
It is rigid.
The, I'm sure the applicant will clarify, but in my experience pergolas are like slats.
That's what I thought. Yeah.
Anything with open walled, support posted open wall structure.
Right. And that's our understanding, yes.
Sure. Well, why don't we call the petitioner forward? Please identify yourself related to the property in question, and then of course, please address the board on the issue if you would like to request a postponement, which is completely your right to request. Doesn't mean that the board will approve if you request it, but also you have the right to have, request action here tonight.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you, Ms. Dufresne. So yeah, for any application, it requires from the board a four-vote margin, so if it's three or less, obviously it fails. So that's why we allow you to request postponement. Please proceed.
Okay. If you please, the board, my name is James Hall. Address is 20400 Hall Road. I work for Fund Space Direct, who has been contracted by the homeowner to erect the pergola in question. I do not request postponement. One vote one way or the other probably is not going to be a deal killer on this. What we're looking at is a open structure per se. Although this does have a partial cover, the roof is open, and it's, it's a slotted product. Other places sometimes call it lattice. It is more aesthetic ornate than it is practically a patio cover. It's not an awning. It's open. It has no walls. It cannot be enclosed. And for that fact, it can't really be covered, so that it would be completely an awning or a, a hard awning in, in that kind of a nature. The reason, I, I don't particularly think of it as a, an addition or a structure because it doesn't have walls. It is unenclosed. And, and there is a question, I guess in my mind, as to whether it would be considered a full cover. So if it was taken under the decks, porches, patio structures, and considered unenclosed and, and relatively uncovered, it would only at that point require a 10-foot setback, and we would not, I would not have to be here in front of you and taking you out of your homes on this evening. If anybody's interested, take a look at what they, they look like. I do have a pamphlet or so.
Sure. You can give that to Mr. Lambert, and then he'll pass it across the table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would also, if you please, the board to, if they, if they would, the property itself, the way the house is positioned, because the property on Waddles is so deep, the, the structure itself, those four houses, they're lots, they're basically sitting on the setback. Matter of fact, this, the semicircle projection, which I know is not included as part of the house itself or the structure because it's not put it, it really does go into the setback at this point in time. So there is not a lot of room, even if you, to put anything back there, to get any kind of shade, any kind of covering on these patios. It, it really would be very, very difficult for this homeowner or the ones to his, I guess that would be to his west. So the, the lot size and the way the house has been pushed back because it has a front-projection garage, kind of sets it back to a point where there is not much of a, it, in other neighborhoods, 45-foot would be an extremely large setback. Most times that I deal with them, they're in the 35-foot to 30-foot setbacks, but this is, it is a higher-end neighborhood and can understand why, you know, they would push to have a deeper setback. I'd entertain any questions that the board would have for me.
Thank you. I'll just launch the first one. So I have your brochure here.
Yes, sir.
And I definitely see this is, helps conceptualize the latticing, or the lattice, whatever you want to call it. I notice that this picture here, where, here, is this very similar to what you would be doing with the fabric and then the lattice up here?
Well, there is no fabric on this one.
Okay, so it's just?
Just, just the-
Wooden structure, or whatever structure?
Yes. Now, certain people do try and do curtains along the side. His is that at 16-foot, it'd be very difficult to put curtains in there, because it just, they're just too large. So on the smaller, what we call a cabana-type structure, that usually they're, they're going to put over the top of a hot tub or something like that, they'll put curtains for a privacy issue.
Okay, thank you. Any other members? Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes, in the, in the drawing, it shows the, the grade. Are you planning on keeping the same grade, the same pavers?
Yes.
Okay.
We're, we're-
So no change?
I believe it's not, it's not even pavers. I believe it's a cement slab.
Okay.
And, but it, but yes, we're not trying to get it up, and it will stay within the first level of the, the property, which is also a requirement for porches, patios, and patio structures.
Got a question. You mentioned here that if it was looked at under the ordinance that covers decks, porches, and patio structures, the variance wouldn't be necessary. Did you speak with anybody who told you that this wasn't covered specifically by that, and what did they say? At what point did it become, I mean, because I look at this as, as a porch or patio structure. I mean, this is not, where did you get that information that it's not? Who said?
I actually got it from Mr. Evans. We were talking, discussing possibilities, because originally when I had entertained the fact of going for a variance, I was going under a freestanding issue, because we can't attach to the circular back. It's a, you know, it just doesn't allow for it. And then he said, regardless of one way or the other, whether it's there or that, it's, it, you're still going to have to have a variance one way or the other. So we, we decided that it would probably be best that way, and I hope I didn't speak out of turn, Mr. Evans.
Is that relative to height, or?
Well, I think what is, are you referring to item E of his explanation?
Yes.
Yeah, I think what he's referring to, actually should say, at the ordinance covering uncovered decks and patio structures, the variance wouldn't be necessary, because there would be no roof or roof-like structure out there.
Okay. So it just comes down to whether or not this constitutes cover or not? And is there a-
That could be one way to look at it.
Okay. Is there some kind of, is there any definition about at what point any cover whatsoever would be considered cover, or?
Because there isn't, it'd be kind of discretionary. Well, what's-
Okay.
Is it a 50% cover, 30% cover, 100% cover? So it's got to be best to come here.
I'm sorry. This would be, this, the way this is laid out, it is about a 50% cover.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members? Okay, if you can have a seat, please.
Thank you.
So this time, I'm going to open the public hearing on this matter. A member of the public would like to address the board on this issue, please step to the podium and state your name. Any member of the public?
Hi, I'm Sheegarla Patty. I live at the house, 1204 Rothwell. And the neighborhood, it's a fairly new neighborhood, maybe about, some of the houses are about 10 years old. The ones on my street are around five years old. And I think one of the issues is, I think when the subdivision was constructed, most of the trees were taken out, so it makes it somewhat difficult to provide shade for a lot of the homes that are along my street with the patios facing north. And unfortunately, with, with less trees, you get a lot of wind, and so things like umbrellas, they're more likely to tip over and get blown down. So I've, I've even had times where I've tried to sit outside with the family, and I have small kids, and, you know, umbrella actually tipped over on the table. So that was a little bit worrisome. So basically, I'm just trying to find the simplest solution to provide shade in the backyard.
Right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Any other member of the public would like to address the board on this matter? Please step forward. Seeing that there isn't anyone else, we close the public hearing and bring it back to the board table for consideration or further dialogue. Any member of the board? Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Chairman, I was going to move the approval of the variance based upon the fact there is no opposition from the neighbors that we're aware of. And also, the unusual configuration of the property forces us to consider a variance to accommodate the building of the pergola.
Second.
Motion by Lambert, seconded by McCown. And before we have any discussion, Vice Chairman Eisenbacher, can you confirm, lack of communications on this matter?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I've got no emails, and nothing in the agenda, and nothing on the table.
From residents of concern, yes. Okay, thank you. Now back for discussion on the motion. Is there any discussion?
I agree with Mr. Lambert. I mean, it's an oddly shaped lot with a oddly positioned house. To me, all day long, it looks fine.
Okay.
Yep.
Vice Chairman Eisenbacher?
The only thing I'd add is I'd recommend you plant the trees sooner, because they grow really fast once they're planted, but they never grow when you don't plant them.
It's true. And from the aerial photographs, it's pretty clear that there aren't any planted in that area for sure. So seeing that there isn't any other discussion, Mr. Evans, I believe we're prepared to vote.
Mr. McCown?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes. Motion passes. You have your variance. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So moving on to item number-
Back.
Those are nice. I like that.
Number five, our communications, or zero communications, according to Mr. Evans. We have, then move on to miscellaneous business. Is there any?
Staff has no business.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chairman Eisenbacher?
I believe this is identified as a point where we should probably clarify the zoning ordinance a little bit more, because this, this seems like a standard thing to provide partial shade that's not a 100% cover that we should consider. And like you, like was mentioned earlier, it's not that different from one of those stands that could be purchased from a Home Improvement, or a Costco, or Sam's Club for just an outside shade.
And those are fully covered many times.
They're, yeah, those are 100% cover.
Yeah, so.
And this was only 50% cover. So it's, it seems like something that is not infringing on any of the neighbors and should be considered as part of a deck.
I would also add that I, I think part of the idea of restricting cover to a certain extent is that it affects how the water is treated when it rains, and how, if it comes off the roof, it can create drainage problems. This really has zero effect on that, as though it was not even there in the first place. So I would say that if something isn't completely covered to the point where it's redirecting rainwater, it wouldn't even count as covered, to me, in my mind, but I don't know, is that something we vote on or say anything about?
So we can call it, add that to our list of items for consideration of the planning commission?
Yeah, if the board, yeah, if you want to do that, you go ahead and make a motion, and a planning director and I are keeping a list.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. So the, I guess the formal motion would be, add to the list of considerations as kind of a, new definitions in the zoning ordinance that non-100% covered patio-like structures wouldn't really be necessarily viewed as kind of covered structures in the same way.
A second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Patio-like structures.
Patio-like structures.
Or deck-like structures?
Pergolas, whatever, yes.
Pergolas, et cetera.
Lattices.
I can see, just under the question, you know, why this wasn't already, you know, approved through the planning and council action, changes to the ordinance, but, you know, I think beyond the water issue, our sightline concerns, you have a permanent structure that could be, you know, a, a open sore for neighbors, you know, for blocking their view of, you know, across the green area in their, in the back of their homes, but this clearly is not that either. So I can see why they hadn't taken action on it. Anyone else? Mr. Lambert?
Kind of as a follow-up to that, at first I was wondering whether or not we'd want to give some attitude to homeowners association that might have covenants, but from what I recall from my past experience with homeowners associations, those kind of covenants would still be restrictive regardless of what the city ordinance would be, if I'm not mistaken. So.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
The problem is that homeowners associations have a hard time enforcing-
Well, I know that, yeah.
So we don't want to permit something against a homeowners association necessarily, but hopefully the, the notices would get to someone who's knowledgeable with the homeowners association.
Yeah. Like, I could see the possibility of it getting abused, like the Mazda Garage scenario, but it's like, I think you're really pushing it.
Well, there's limits on the deck already.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I guess, yeah, yeah, so.
I think just to point that was at the, the problem or the pushback you're going to get, in terms of changing the ordinance, is it's either covered or uncovered. And if you get into this 50%, 30%, 90%, it's, it's just too, there's too much of variance there, forgive the pun. So I, the problem is you either, it either is covered, or it's not covered.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
We need a definition of what that is, I guess.
Redirecting rainwater could be.
Then you could make an argument, it's the same thing. Does 50% redirect rainwater? Does 90%?
How much, how much, how much volume of water needs to be moved? This is, get semantic quick.
When we were interpreting this as to whether, you know, how it fit into the code, as I explained earlier, it's like, well, 80% cover, 50? So we figured we do it safe, allow the board to review each case, because, as you know, there are different styles just in that catalog. And this person, for example, mentioned that people like to put up curtains, which I never thought of. So there could be a wide range of things that are out there now, and as, you know, technology and people's ideas, there could be more things.
Would it be considered an enclosed structure if they were to do that, or no?
If they put, well, if they put up curtains, I guess, define enclosed structure.
Fabric.
I don't know, whatever the-
Maybe that's what we need, is the definition of enclosed and covered.
I guess, the, the thing is, he could have just as easily asked Paul to bring this as an interpretation. But he's just sort of forgetting that, ignoring that step, saying, fine, we agree with your interpretation, Mr. Evans, planning department, this is, this is a, a structure with a roof on it. So, but he could have instead said, you know, kind of as he alluded to, we want an interpretation. Then you could have interpreted as the board, no, that doesn't cover, that, our interpretation is it's not a roof, therefore you don't need, you don't need to come to us for a variance. So he just skipped that step and said, can I have my variance? He rolled the dice, so to speak. So, I mean, I understand what you're all saying, but he, he could have asked for an interpretation. Same thing with whether it's enclosed or something. They could, someone could come and ask this board to interpret the ordinance, you know.
I think your comments are well-stated, and it's really, reminds me of that very old argument, you know, are you a little bit pregnant? So like, either you are or you're not, and that's, you know, there's, there's a death by a thousand cuts here. We could talk, you know, of, you know, like you said before, 30%, 80%, 50%. But here's another way of looking at it. So look at property 3913 here, whose backyard is very small and abuts the neighbor's side of their house in a very, you know, narrow fashion or short distance. So if you, you know, what, what happens if now Mr. 3913, or Miss 3913 says, well, he got the pergola over here where there's more space. Now, think about a pergola of that same size right here, like literally right on the property line, then, you know, clearly, that's different.
And what's the deck, Mr. Evans, what's the deck or patio setback requirement?
What it allows, if it's uncovered deck or patio, or back porch, you can encroach into the rear yard setback by 15 feet.
15 feet, okay.
Yeah.
So there's much, basically.
Yeah, he's doing the same thing. He's just got-
Yeah. Pergola.
Pergola.
Covering-ish.
Covering-ish, yes.
So can we, for, before we vote on the motion, re, can we restate the motion for us? Make sure that we're on the right page here?
I, I, I can try. I think what I would like to do is, is either ask the board to restate it, or I can make a note in our spreadsheet that, because that's what I'll, that's what I've been doing. If it, resolution of the board, watch the meeting, and here's where it came from. So one good thing that you've all done is you've had some decent discussion with some points. So anyone considering, you know, when the planning commission considers that, they know where you guys are coming from, because you talked about a lot of different things.
Well, I was thinking, for our purposes, it'd be good to know, now that we've had this discussion, so maybe Mr. McCown can restate it from his memory.
Sure.
So essentially, gain a clear, I mean, in the zone, within the zoning code, kind of either more concisely or more precisely define what constitutes an uncovered, enclosed, or an uncovered structure. So that way, I mean, I guess that's high-level summary.
Okay. So you're, you're requesting the commission to investigate that versus telling them that?
Yeah, Mr., yeah, because like Mr. Evans has said, he's been keeping a list of kind of the things that we've found that may be considered as part of the zoning ordinance or not.
Mr. Eisenbacher?
One thing that you mentioned was the word "structure," and I definitely see this one as being a structure, because it's permanently mounted into the ground versus like-
Footings is, yeah.
Yeah, anything you're digging a hole and putting concrete down is definitely a structure, where if you're setting something on top of the patio that is not secured to the patio, other than potentially by with a few screws. So it's definitely a structure, but what's covered?
Yeah, exactly. More of a tighter definition of covered.
Well, and I will say that the ordinance says that if it's got a roof on it, it's a building.
And what constitutes a roof?
What's the definition of a roof, then?
Right, right.
This is not a roof.
These would look like Joyce, not a roof.
Yeah.
The roof is what goes on top.
Not roofing material.
One thing the commission's going to look at, and they're probably going to ask us, is how many of these have come before the board? And I can tell you in seven years that I've been working with this board, this is the first and only one.
I've seen a lot of them, though.
I see a lot, there are a lot.
Sure, oh, yeah, yeah.
They're just not that close to the setbacks.
Well, in this instance, I, I don't think you could, as the applicant correctly indicated, the houses, 1, 2, 3, the three houses adjacent and west, you couldn't cover anything with any sort of more permanent because they built the house right up to the rear setback. So there's no room to put anything with a roof, a tarp, or an awning, those retractable awning, there's no, there's no room to do that. So no matter who comes in for any kind of covered thing back there, you're going to need some kind of variance probably.
Is it clear?
Yes.
All right.
Anyone else?
Do we have a second? And I'm out.
Yeah, we did.
Yes.
Mr. Evans, I believe we're prepared to vote.
Okay. Mr. Eisenbacher?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Desmond?
Yes.
Mr. McCowen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now on to public comment. Anyone would like to address the board on any matter, please go to the podium, state your name.
Nothing?
You sure?
You have nothing to say? All right.
Uh, other than that, we are going to be adjourned here. Mr. Evans, you have anything else? Anything, anything else?
Nothing else.
Okay.